Okay, at this time I'd like to call to order the Enfield Aquifer Protection Agency, regular meeting to order. And I'd like to announce the fire exits. There's one to the rear of the chambers. Just go out away from the building, or you can go through these doors here, down a flight of stairs, and out the back of the building, a safe distance away. Can everyone stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
John Petronella. Virginia Higley, here. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Frank Limo.
Here.
Rich Suzak. And Mary Scott.
Okay. Due to the absent commissioners, I would like to seat Commissioner Nelson Correa and Commissioner Vinnie Grillo for the remainder of the meeting. Can I get an approval of the minutes of October 24th, 2019?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Public participation. At this time, is there anybody out there who would like to speak to the Aquifer Protection Agency about any business that is not currently on our agenda? If so, come to the front, state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to new business, ARA 009, 79 Enfield Street. Okay, this is an Aquifer registration application for a used tire max to operate a general repair facility located over the A-43 Aquifer. Applicant Moshe Ronan.
Moshe.
Last name?
Ronan, R-O-N-E-N.
He says it better than me. MAP 035, lot 0217, BL Zone. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Okay, I have three other locations, Massachusetts. I've been doing automotive and tires for the last 50 years. We bought the building on 79 Enfield Street to operate as a tire company in a very light automotive repair, like brakes, mufflers, shock and struts, and of course, tires, and used tires. We are concentrating on used tires. We buy almost brand-new tires from all over the world. Today, economy and the prices of high prices of new tires, we found that it's very, a big demand to buy good used tires and affordable prices. It's a clean operation. The building I bought, I know you guys live in Enfield probably, the building was a dumpster for the last few years. If you drive by my location at 79 Enfield Street, it's like a dealership. We put over a million dollars into the building, and basically, we were approved by all the neighbors with the previous meeting that we have with the ZBA. It's a clean operation. It's a good operation, and basically, we are friendly, neighbors friendly. And like I said, that's my fifth location, so we are very seasoned as far as running a good automotive business.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Higley?
You said you're General Automotive, and that's a good thing. Usually tire places have backup things they do. Do you have a grease trap in the building?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, you have a grease trap in the building? You know, where your waste?
Oil separator.
Oil separator, I'm sorry.
We don't do no oil. We have no oils. We have no coolant. We don't do engines. We don't do transmission. We have no fluid whatsoever, except...
You don't maintenance your own equipment?
I'm sorry?
You don't maintenance your own equipment? You don't have any tow trucks?
Well, we have a gallon of brake fluid, a gallon of transmission fluid to maintain the lifts. The lift, every six months to a year, we need to tap off the hydraulic oil, and it's a secure, it's placed in a secure cabinet and a manager office, that the inspection can tell you when we inspected the building. And basically, they're very, almost none fluid or hazardous waste. There's none.
Okay.
Very, very little.
Thank you.
Just to maintain the lifts, like I said.
Commissioner Limo.
Good evening. Welcome to Enfield.
Thank you.
So I read the report, and it looks like everything is in order relative to what you were just talking about, the hazardous materials. So I was just interested in the used tires. So what's the process? Is there a retreading operation here? Because years ago, that's what that building used to do there.
That's a thing of the past. Forty years ago, I was in a recapping business. That's almost not exist anymore, except truck tires, which I did forty years ago also. Basically, we buy tires from all over the world to our brokers. Tires coming from Germany, from Mexico, from Canada, of course, from all over the country. We have contract with GEICO Insurance, Travelis Insurance. It's cars that being wrecked, and basically, they dismantle all the parts. Good part going to body shop, good tires going to me and some other companies. Basically, when we get them, they're a little dirty, so we shine them. We have three inspection process. We go physically look at and make sure there's no damage. They've already been inspected by the brokers, but we go through it again. We have a tire inspector machine, which we blow up the tire into the machine. We inspect it, we run it, make sure there's no bubbles, no cut, no separation, no nails. If anything we find, go into the junkyard, and basically, we clean them. And 99%, when we sell the tire, there's no leak. Our last inspection is after we sell the tire, we mount it, we balance it, and then we have a tank, a water tank, and we inspect it one more time. The only way to find tire leaks, it's in the water. And we inspect it again the last time, and before that tire will go on a vehicle, customer vehicle, there's no way that tire have a leak, separation, bubbles, or whatever.
So the residents will be able to come in and get a good, quality used tire that has, if it was a 20,000-mile tire, for example, it may have 10,000 miles life.
We only buy, yeah, we only buy 60% to 70% remaining shred on the tires. Other, we don't buy them. And nine out of 10, when the customer coming in, they're not stupid, they're looking for a good product, we invite them to look at the tire before they buy them. They look at them, they measure them with pennies, with dollars, with fingers, and we go through the whole process. It's very, we're very transparent. We, and we encourage the customer to look at the tires before they buy them, before we mount them. This one, there's no, you saw me, blah, blah, blah. But, so when they leave, they saw the tires, and they know exactly what they're getting.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for the explanation.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple. You said you're going to do limited repairs?
Yes.
What type of repairs?
Brakes, mufflers, shock and struts, ball joint, front end work, alignment, basically on the car. There's no fluid involved. It's, I call it easy, clean work. And we don't get involved with anything that's involved with, like I said, transmission, or rear end or engine. We send them to the dealers, or we send them to somebody that does them.
What are you going to do with the brake fluid?
Again, we have a gallon of brake fluid. The only way the car need brake fluid if it's low on fluid, nine out of 10, when they come for a brake job, the brake fluid, it's there. We don't flush them, we don't touch the brake fluid, except tapping it. Basically, when we do a brake job, we make sure that the brake fluid is into the right level.
Okay.
So like I said, nine out of 10, my, if you do some research, very, very little involved with flushing the brake fluid.
I was a mechanic for many, many years, and when you do brake jobs on newer cars, a lot of cars, they don't want you forcing the piston back in to put the new pads in because it'll mess up the anti-lock brake actuator. So you have to open the bleeders and let the brake fluid out, so you're not forcing the system backwards. Now...
It's going to a container, you put it out, and you put it back again. And if you need to tap it, you open the master, you add half an inch, quarter, if needed. Most of them doesn't need. So it's really, it's all self-contained, there's no spillage, there's no...
I mean, cars, when you're doing brake jobs, they need calipers?
Yeah, it could happen, yeah, but again, it's, you take a caliper off, you put it back again.
And it's full of fluid?
Yeah, well, the fluid is right there. It's, we have a container one under it.
Okay. How many used tires are you going to have in the facility at any one time?
Right now, we have close to 500.
500. What are you going to do with the old tires that are being taken off the customers' vehicles? Where are they going to be stored?
We have, I bought a storage trailer, very small, and before I bought it, I spoke, I had a meeting with all the neighbors. I had a ZBA meeting. I explained that I have to have a storage container. Basically, we have a company that come once a week, or once to 10 days. We have a contract, the environmental license company to do that type of work. And we store all the junk tires, the ball tire, whatever we take off, into the storage trailer. It's self-secure, there's no, if you walk around, most of the garages have tires against the wall, tires by the neighborhood, tires everywhere. We don't. It's all, if you drive by today or tomorrow, you won't find one half of tire around my building. It's all in the storage. Every Thursday, a company come and pick up the tire, and we pay for it, of course. Not cheap, but that's my priority, to keep the building clean. And when you have tires around the building, kids, from my experience, play with it, neighbors run them around the road, run them around, it's very dangerous, so we make sure it's all secure.
And where is this storage container going to be located?
It's right in the back of the building, facing one of my, one of the bay. And my biggest concern with the neighborhood and the ZBA, to paint it the same color as the building, which is gray, which is painted, so if you drive by, you almost, you can't even see it. And it's very small. It's like, I say trailer, it's like a little pad.
Has this passed ZBA?
Uh, yes, ZBA did approve...
An outdoor storage container?
They don't have the jurisdiction, but they did approve the business to open. That's part of the K7 approval. The outdoor storage container, I believe, CEO Rick Rochelli has discussed this with the applicant, and he's taking care of getting approvals for that outdoor pod.
So that will be coming in front of us?
Yes.
Right. So the container is not, is the container on site now?
It is, yeah. We were made aware of it when we went out there, and we are working with getting that, getting the right approvals for that, so.
Okay. Is the builder fire sprinkler?
Yes.
And it's active system, it works?
It has a fire color.
Because we know when tires catch on fire, they create oil. And that's, if a tire burns, it creates oil, and that's the last thing we want dumping on the Aquifer.
Right.
Is the tire on site?
Right. Which isn't, it's not a permitted use at this time, so. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Vinnie, anything? Nelson?
Just to follow up on the tire container, is this painted gray? Is that your container?
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, back in the building.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So seeing no further questions, how would you guys like to proceed? And I just want to be clear, this is nothing to do with that storage container.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve ARA 009, 79 Enfield Street, Aquifer registration application for used tire max to operate a general repair facility located over the A-43 Aquifer. Applicant Moshe Ronan, MAP 35, lot 217, BL Zone.
Okay, motions made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Roll call.
Nelson Correa.
Here.
No. Four against.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
John, oh, he's absent. Virginia Higley, four. Ken Nelson?
Four.
Frank Limo?
Four.
Okay, all in favor, none against. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time.
Moving on, new business B, XARA 2107, for 77 Town Farm Road. Aquifer registration for the town of Enfield's transfer station located over the A-82 Aquifer. Applicant town of Enfield, Don Noons, Donald Noons, MAP 071, lot 3, R88 Zone. Roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
Virginia Higley, here. Ken Nelson?
Here.
Frank Limo?
Here.
Okay. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Donald Noons. I'm the Director of Public Works, and with me to my left is...
Mayor Kemet from Barton and Lejutis, formerly Anchor Engineering.
So we're going to be, well, we're going to be talking about some long overdue improvements at the transfer station, and first off, I just want to say thank you to the Joint Facilities Committee, more so to Doug Maxellin, who kind of really spearheaded this about a year and a half ago. And I also want to again thank the town council and the town manager for getting this funding and getting this through this, because as for many of you know, when you go up there, it's just long overdue, and staff is beyond excited to actually have running water and actually go into a bathroom that isn't a porta potty. So it's going to be a wonderful improvement. We're talking about putting in two scales, a new scale house, we're rerouting traffic, we're trying to make access better, and the flow entirely better through there. We're also, we're going to be bringing up water, actually a two-inch line. We're going to also have a yard hydrant for the fire department to connect into up there, and we're also going to be feeding the dog park with a spur that goes out so the dogs can have water up there. So that's the long and short of it, and again, I will pass it over to Modic for kind of details, and if you can watch on your screen, and we will do our best. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Well, hello, everyone, everyone. It is very nice to be back in person, let me tell you. So last year, we were engaged by the town to design improvements to the existing transfer station site. And basically, the purpose was to provide a better efficiency of the site itself and to improve circulation out there. The plan I have in front of you, if you can see, shows the map.
Is that the highest I can zoom in?
No.
Oh, there you go. So this is the Aquifer Protection Map, and I have out here outlined the limits of the boundary. It's about 173 acres, and our project is about right where my hand is now, is right where the improvements and existing transfer station is.
Rabbitson, slight technical issues, so we'll get through it.
Yeah, I won't zoom in.
The mouse is a little touchy.
I want to get to the same screen, I mean, get a bigger... All right. So basically, the outline of the Aquifer Protection, if you can follow my cursor, this is the limit transposed on the plan. Everything to the east of this, which is down this section, is within the Aquifer Protection area. Everything upwards or to the west is outside of the Aquifer Protection area. The existing bins out there are located outside of the APA. The section right here is where the existing scale is currently, and the existing gate is right in this location, which we're going to, it's going to remain in the same location. Basically, part of the improvement here is we are going to be relocating that existing scale, as well as providing a secondary scale with Scale House, which will be located in this section, in here. I'm afraid to.
There we go.
Okay. So just to walk you through the process of how this thing's going to work, we're going to be coming into the gates here. The trucks will be able to access the first scale here, get weighed, then go and continue on to the bins, dump off out into this area, go back out onto the secondary scale and get reweighed, and then exit the site. For these non-commercial, for the residents out there, for the smaller stuff, there's a bypass lane back here, so anything that could be dumped off into the canisters, cardboard or whatnot in this area, they, instead of going through the entire facility, there's a bypass created here to take them right back out, back out to the site. What I do want to showcase is that we are, as part of this application, we are providing public water out there, which there is no water, and we're also providing a septic system, which there is no facilities out on site. The septic system has been designed outside of the Aquifer Protection area. This has already been approved by the North Central District Health Department. The water line is going to be... The water line is going to be tapping off of Town Farm Road, following Ecology Drive, right on the outside shoulder, and right into the site. We are also providing a future spur for any possible fountains or water necessities for the dog park that's out on site. So just to sum up what this design is entailing, we are reconfiguring the site egress and ingress. We are relocating existing scale and introducing a secondary scale and relocating, or actually providing a updated Scale House for the facility. We are defining storage, better defining the storage areas, as well as parking limits, which we have provided parking in this location here. We are installing water service, as well as sanitary septic system. And one addition is that we are introducing a detention area for stormwater management. The site right now currently has a terrible need for improvement out there. There's pining of water everywhere on site. So this thing has been designed to catch that. We are using BMPs out here, best management practices, for this entire site. This site was previously permitted for a general permit back in 2012. That's probably when this should have been in front of this board, but it just filtered cracks, I'm assuming. But now we're here, we have this opportunity to be in front of you with the upgrades. And I do want to add that this entire facility is going to be protected. There's going to be a chain link fence and gate, so there's going to be no access for anybody that's not allowed to be within the site.
All set?
Yes, and I can answer any questions as they pop up.
One question I have is, your mulch pile that's on site, that's free to the residents, why is that inside the fence? You know, a lot of residents on weekends is when they have time to be able to go access that pile, and I think it's a beautiful thing that town does, but they're locked out of it.
We've had contractors come in, that's what, and not just like a pickup truck kind of stuff. We've had some, we've had some pretty large contractors try to come in or do the same thing, too. That's why we kept the wood chips, if you notice, by the dog park. Those are the bigger ones, and that's like, they like using them, too. So if you really want the big chunkier stuff underneath, you can have all that you want. But the stuff that's kind of finer that we take care of...
It's a nice mulch.
We've had some, I wouldn't say unscrupulous, but some, we've had some theft out there, so that's why we kind of protect it up there.
Okay, great.
I understand, but we just, it'd be gone.
Well, that makes sense.
It'd be gone in a night.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I think you defined it as a new road that's going to bypass the scales for the residents to go to dumpsters down on the bottom.
This section here?
Yeah. Could you go over that again?
So basically...
That's not there currently, that's a...
That is not there, no.
Right, okay.
So the vehicles will be coming down through this area. There's, if you can see this hatch area, this is the unloading area.
Okay.
So the cars will be able to pull off to the side here and be able to put in their...
Refrigerators.
Whatever, whatever their bulky waste is into that location there. And then, instead of going through the facility, through the commercial end of it, they'll be able to bypass the entire system by going through this driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And there's also on-site parking here that was designed for the employees, as well as, you know, there's something visiting.
So, okay, so that's like an enhanced safety component, then? So it's going to keep the residents away from getting tangled up with those big trucks or bigger vehicles?
Exactly what it is. It's trying to keep them separated, and definitely...
So the other piece is, they simply need to have their dump permit up to date, because they're not going to be crossing scales for a fee, right?
Yeah, well, some, those things are like for cardboard. We don't, people, folks can come in and bring their cardboard, we don't, you're not even on the scale, we don't even check you, you just go dump it off, as long as with like, you know, the TVs and textiles and stuff like that. That's what that area is intended to be, strictly that. It's not for bulky, you mentioned bulky, it's not bulky waste, that, you have to go over to scale for bulky. So it's cardboard, it's textiles, it's, you know, air conditioners, recycle, that kind of stuff. That's what that, just what that area is envisioned for, so.
So the permits are required for yours, you have to have a dump permit annually to go to that area, because really it's kind of...
Yeah, it's $5.
Right, oh, I understand. No, I think it's a great deal, but...
I don't, you don't need a permit to dump cardboard.
No.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So to go to that new area, anybody can just go in, permit or no permit?
Yes, as of, yes.
How are you going to monitor refrigerators and air conditioners if they're going to the same area? Because they're a $20 fee.
We have, we'll, again, our scale house is going to be built for two people, so we have someone looking out on the other side.
Just keep an eye on it.
Yeah, we just, we have to keep an eye on folks. Yep.
That's a nice new feature.
You all set for it?
Yeah, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Are you shifting everything more towards the containers?
All right, so, Modic, why don't you blow it up? Everything in gray is existing that you see on this, on the screen, and everything in black is new. So it's going to be shifted to the east a little bit. That access road that Modic was talking about is going to be to the east, right along the fence line. Uh... to the east, right along the fence line. And there's, those are the containers there right now.
Yeah, where the cursor is, these are the existing containers on-site, and we're actually relocating, I guess you might say, to the west. So away from the property line.
Okay, so the original scale that's there now, is that being moved?
That is being relocated to where it says 70-foot scale.
Yeah.
That is going to be relocation there.
Okay.
This is the secondary scale.
Okay.
That will be installed.
I'm in there too much, and I just didn't think there was enough space from the scale that's current, those dumpsters and that access road, because it's pretty tight right now over there.
It's tight because of, again, of poor, just poor layout and just 10 pounds of, you know what, in a five-pound bag. And it's just, that's what it is. And when you look at this, the first thing I, when I said to Modic, it's hard to envision, because when you go up there, it doesn't look like there's, like you said, there's any room, but there's a lot of room out there. It's just a little reconfiguring and little things like that, where I said, for flow and other things. So it will work, so.
Just for better orientation, this area right here, that's the existing shack that's out there, so you know where that is. And there's some telephone poles. You've probably seen them along, but that's the line of the overhead lines.
Yeah. Okay. And then during construction, I'm going to have to come in quite a bit with my truck and a load, just to make sure the process is working and empty it to come back out, you know.
Yes, construction is going to be, I appreciate you checking in upon us. Construction is going to be a challenge. We may have to shut down, you know, while they're picking some of the stuff with the larger cranes, but we'll take care of all that. And, but we should be good.
Well, this, this is a huge step. I was part of the original scale being put in.
Wow.
And all of that, it used to be a punch pass, you know, 20 bucks, five punches, and you're good to go. So it will definitely help things out, because certain times of the year, you could wait for an hour, hour-plus in line to try to get in and out of the transfer station, so.
Yeah, so that, that's the whole benefit of that second scale. I know that we probably, you know, on a Wednesday morning at 9:07, we're probably not going to need the second scale. But Saturday and Fridays and Saturdays and after a long, I mean, we'll be using it. And the beauty part about it is, if the 70-foot scale goes down, we'll still have the other scale, so we're not shut down. We also have a generator system now that we've put in that will be, will be supplying backup power, so we'll be up and running. The goal is to not be shut down. So one way or another, we'll have a scale up, and we'll have power if we need to.
Can we run the generator off the methane from the landfill? They do it all over the place.
Modic would be able to answer that, but I'm not going to, we have a backup generator that we, that we actually had two generators given to us from military surplus. And they were NATO ones, and they had, one of them has 400 hours on, and the other one has 425, and they said they were no good. But it's beyond their lifestyle, it's beyond their lifespan for the military. For us, those are brand, those are brand new.
Yeah.
And we, I grabbed them, and one of them is making its home in life over there outside, that's where it's going to be, so.
Beautiful, beautiful.
We're going to run the trash compactor off of that. So we don't have to have separate, like, three-phase power, so we'll be able to hook it up to the trash comp, to the cardboard compactor, and also future later on for the bulky compactor we're looking for.
Great. Okay, thank you.
One more thing. Just clarification on the second, you referred it to as a secondary scale or the other scale. So that's going to be, when it's busy, you're going to use it. Because the way I look at that, the way I understood it at first, it was always going to be an operation. You'd come in on one scale and go out on the other. So it's not going to be. Sometimes you'll be just using one.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is all foreign territory to us, to be perfectly honest, and we'll have to just figure out how things go. I mean, on that busy Saturday morning, that's going to be, we'll have no issues using it again. Or if the staff wants to use it on, I'm saying, on a random Tuesday morning at 9:07, that's fine with them, too. We'll just have to, again, this is all new territory to us. So the best operating procedures for us, we'll figure that out as we kind of go. We'll have to have a learning curve with us.
I think it's going to be easier with the two scales, because now your driver's door is always to the house where the guy is. And, you know, when you go to USA or something, they have sliding windows. You reach right in, it's done. Right now, they have to come out of the house, take your credit card, go back in, and, but definitely a plus.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve XARA 21-07, 77 Town Farm Road Aquifer Protection for the Town of Enfield's Transfer Station, located over the A82 Aquifer, applicant Town of Enfield, represented by Donald Noon's map, 71 Lot 3, R88 Zone.
Motion's made. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Grillo. Roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Virginia Higley, four. Ken Nelson.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
I'm four.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, long overdue. I'll entertain a motion to...
On the contact information, I think Tuttle retired before I did. Pia Hawkins is...
Excuse me, Frank. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. We're 10 minutes late.
I thought you adjourned. Oh, sorry.
I move we adjourn Aquifer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none? Okay, moving on to planning and zoning. Okay, at this time, I would like to call to order the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Thursday, May 27, 2021. Can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh my God, that sounds so much better, because on Zoom, it's so echoed all over.
This was so exciting.
Okay, roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Virginia Higley, here. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Lyndon DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella. You've got to read them all.
John Petronella.
Absent.
Mary Scott.
Absent.
And Rich Susak.
Absent. Richard Susak just contacted me. He is unable to attend tonight, so he will not be in. Okay, fire evacuation. At the rear of the chambers, you can exit the building, go down the stairs, walk towards Route 5 and a safe distance away from the building, or you can go out to the left of the chambers, go down one flight of stairs and out the back of the building, and again, a safe distance away from the building. Approval of minutes for April 15, 2021, special meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments, questions, or corrections?
Uh-uh.
Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, none. Approval of minutes, May 13, 2021's regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments, questions, or corrections? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, at this time, I would like to seat Commissioner Nelson Correa and Commissioner Vinnie Grillo for the remainder of the meeting to take the place of the absent commissioners. Public participation. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak to the commission about anything that is not currently on our agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. Bond releases? I don't see any this evening?
Nope.
Continued public hearings? I don't see any. New public hearings. Public hearing 3005, 89 Enfield Street. Roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Virginia Higley, here. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Lyndon DeGray.
Here.
Okay. Do you have the, you have the notice, one of you? Go ahead, Jenny. Thank you.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at their regular meeting on Thursday, May 27, at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications. Public hearing 3005, 89 Enfield Street, application to modify a previously approved special permit to modify the previously set conditions of approval. 89 Enfield Street LLC owner, Thomas Murphy, applicant, map 35, Lot 218, BL Zone.
Is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Murphy.
Welcome, Tom. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
So we're going to be starting a brand-new restaurant, Celtic Table &amp; Tap.
What's the name?
It's going to be called Celtic Table &amp; Tap.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Yeah, he's talking about a restaurant. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thomas Murphy.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. So basically, as you know, there was an existing restaurant there for a long time. We plan to operate a brand-new restaurant under the new name Celtic Table &amp; Tap. I also own Murphy's Pub in Agua, and we plan to do something very similar, similar but different. So we're just applying to make a couple minor changes to the existing special permit.
Great. And what are those changes?
So in the original permit, it said that any modifications to the inside would need new approval. We're looking to actually put in a square bar inside there as well. We're also petitioning to change the hours of operation. We are not changing, the capacity of the building is not going to change. The capacity of the existing patio is not going to change. So what we're going to be doing is pretty, pretty minor cosmetic stuff.
And what are the current hours of operation?
I believe it's till 11 o'clock.
Till 11 o'clock?
Yeah.
And you'd like to stay open till 2?
So we're going to, we're asking to stay open Sunday through Wednesday till midnight, 1:00 AM on Thursday, and then till 2:00 AM Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sorry.
Okay. Jen, a couple questions. Why are we involved on the interior renovations of this facility? And second, who put restrictions on the hours of this facility and why?
They were all under the conditions of approval on the special permit. I, I'm not even sure that those conditions are truly enforceable. They shouldn't really be there. The commission doesn't have jurisdiction over the inside of the building, the layout. It is, the only thing they have is the Design District over there, so that's the exterior. It is normal for the commission to set, you know, hours of operation as a reasonable condition, but it is the Liquor Control Commission's jurisdiction as far as when the bar is open and, in that regard, so.
Okay. That's why I asked the question, because we don't have jurisdiction inside a building. I know the commission has done some strange things in the past, but, so that one there, I think we let the people speak and let it follow the course. The hours of operation, again, when certain people come in front of us and we try to limit their hours, this is what happens. It creates a problem. I don't think this commission, especially on a restaurant, should have that authority over them, especially after the year that they've just gone through along with the rest of us, to limit. He's not increasing his occupancy at all. The outdoor patio is staying the same. It's a beautiful building. We're talking about the old Friendly's building.
Correct.
And Commissioner Higley.
I have one thing. On the original approval, there were television state, television monitors outside, which was fine. But after they opened up, they put a monitor on the front of the building where the stop sign is, and it never got approval. It never was approved. It was a violation, and we might want to think about not putting that out there, because it's right by a streetlight, and people are not paying attention. They're watching the football game.
In the front of the building on Route 5?
Yes, yes. And I've been waiting patiently.
She is absolutely right.
Yes.
So it's in the state right away?
No, it's on the front. It's attached to the very front of the building.
Oh, it's on the building.
And the zoning enforcement officer at that time went and tried to get it shut off, because everybody was coming and saying, there was an almost accident, people aren't paying attention, someone cut me off, somebody didn't go because they were watching a touchdown. So I think that it's great that you wanted to redo the inside, and we should do that, but I don't think that should be turned on. It never got approval.
So if we were, if we were to use it, I think the only way we would use it is as a marketing billboard, so to post Saturday night special, that type of thing?
I don't think that's allowed for signage.
I don't think we allow digital...
We don't allow moving signs.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
You could do, you could put wings, you know, all you can eat tonight, but it's got to stay solid.
There.
Okay. We've contemplated taking that TV down anyway.
Oh, good. Well, thank you.
I like your idea with the solid thing. So if you can come up with something through the computer where it's, you can change it every night, but you can't change it during the night.
Gotcha.
So Thursday night special, you know, and do it Thursday.
Okay, all right.
Anything to get people in your door, I'm all for, so.
Because I've gone by your restaurant in South, Agua, I'm not sure. It's like right on the border. And you do have signs that say Thursday night, whatever, so.
They're exactly what he was saying, like a set.
Yeah.
Yeah, thing.
Yeah. So a condition of approval would be that that TV is no longer a TV facing Route 5, but it can be used for...
Signage.
Permanent advertising. Yeah.
But you have to come to Rick for that.
No, it's already there.
I think maybe the, the better wording might mirror the regulation, which says just no moving or flashing signage.
Done.
Done.
You're good with that?
Fair.
Okay. All right.
I've been to Murphy's.
Mike.
Quite a few times. I have a question, though.
Yep.
I don't know if this matters or not, but were you thinking of having the same idea as Murphy's as far as the live music and...
Possibly on Saturday nights, but if any music that we do would be simple acoustic. No bands, no...
I'm just asking if it was going to be on the outside of the patio, because I know, like I said, listen, I've been there. It's a great, great, great place, great time. I'm glad it's...
Right.
But I was just asking that question, if that's where your thoughts.
Yeah, like I said, it would be acoustic music inside, maybe. If we did anything else, I doubt we would do anything, but it would be more happy hour if I did it.
Thank you.
So the, the only thing that that raises is there are several residential homes on the left corner of your property. So if you were to do it outside, I think there we should limit hours outside. Inside, you could do it till 2:00 in the morning. I don't care.
Right.
You know, just being a courteous neighbor.
I'm not even sure the patio's big enough, to be honest.
Okay, so if we just said all entertainment's to be indoors only?
That'd be, that's fine.
You guys good with that?
Yep.
Sure.
That way the neighbors can't complain. He can have his live music, and we can come in for our free samples. I mean...
Wait, when are we, when are you opening? Not we, when are you opening?
I would love to open in the fall, but, you know, we'll see how that goes.
Is it currently open?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Better remodel the inside for that.
Right.
I know, I miss that.
Okay, any other Commissioner, Commissioner Alamo?
Yes, so Commissioner, Chairman Nelson was talking about the hours of operation. So in our report from staff, there were several conditions in the prior approval here. Staff reports that the planning and zoning commission at that time was, you know, went outside their purview, and that is recommended that we should remove conditions 6, 7, and 8. Stop, sorry, 5, 6, and 8. So that was relative to the hours of operation. So when it, when we approve this, it will be talking about removing those, Jen, those conditions that you striked here. If we approve it, we striking, we're striking the concern that Chairman Nelson had about the hours, and there's two other ones.
Yeah, that, that is what is proposed. That's what staff had recommended, just to make the conditions just, you know, more enforceable and correct. But, yeah, there would be, it would be removing conditions 5 and 6. Condition 7 would become 5, and then I added a proposed condition number 6, just that the conditions for PH 2743.02, which is for the outdoor patio, and 2743.03, which I believe was, I put that in my staff report. Hold on. That was to add the bar to the outside. That was to add the bar to the outside. Those conditions, under those two special permits, would still apply. And so then, it looks like we would be adding a condition number 7 for no moving or flashing signage, especially as it pertains to the television that's outside the building, and no outdoor entertainment on the patio.
Thank you. I'm glad that, not that this came before us, that we're able to straighten out the prior restrictions on, on the business. I, along with what I believe with Chairman Nelson was saying, we shouldn't be doing that kind of restrictions on people. Thank you. Good lucks.
Commissioners, any other questions before I open it up to the public? Seeing none. Is there anybody at this time who would like to speak in favor or against Public Hearing 3005-89 Enfield Street? If so, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time? You're all set. Going for the second time? And going for the third time? Okay, there's nobody here. If you're interested, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Public hearing is closed. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH 3005, proposed modification to special permit conditions set under PH 2732 with the nine conditions. It's, I counted them down. You took out 5 and 6, so 7 is 6, 8 is 7. 8 is the no live TV outside, and 9 is the no outdoor restaurant.
What?
I got, so 4, 5, 6, I got 8.
Do you have no outdoor entertainment?
Yeah, I have, so 7, the old condition number 7 became 5. Then we took out 8, and then proposed number 6.
Okay.
And then 7 would be the flashing, no flashing or moving signage.
You're correct, with the eight conditions.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion's made in seconded. Roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Virginia Higley, four. Ken Nelson.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck, and hope to see you up and running soon.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Have a great night.
Good luck.
Moving on, XZA 21-5, text amendment to Section 4.20.1, footnote 14, to allow bedrooms in the basement as long as the requirements of the building code are met. Town of Enfield is the applicant.
So, this started with CEO Rick Rochelli's request, which
Gonna do roll call. Right? This is a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Virginia Higley, here. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Okay, continue. Sorry, Jen.
This was a request that started with CEO Rick Rochelli, who, he reviews a lot of the building permits when they come through and signs off on zoning's behalf for approvals. And one of the things that usually comes through is that people would like to put bedrooms in their basements. And so, right now, that's not currently allowed, and Rick had suggested perhaps adding a footnote 14 to the Section 4.20.1, which would, as proposed, allow bedrooms in the basements as long as the requirements of the building code are met. We did let you know about this request, or let the commission know about this request probably a little over maybe two months ago now. It has gone to the Capital Region Council of Governments. They didn't have any issues with the proposed language. So, here we are.
Okay, so I think this is long overdue for the town of Enfield, and the big reason is safety. Because Enfield don't allow bedrooms in the basement, people do it without asking. And then you have safety issues. You can't get out of a regular Star Ranch window or a cape. Kids can't get out, and it's a death trap. By allowing them to be in the basement, they may come pull a permit. They'll be informed. They need to put larger windows in, smoke detectors in the bedrooms outside the room. Your furnace and everything is down there. So, I think this is a win-win for the town and the community because I guarantee there's a lot of houses out there right now with bedrooms in the basement, and rightfully so. They do have means of egress and everything down there, but they're not permitted. And I think we're righting a wrong in the town of Enfield that's been here for a long time. Potential in-laws now, maybe possible, family members, stuff like that. That's, you know, by allowing this, it helps out everybody in these times. So, I definitely support this move. Any questions, comments, concerns? As long as they meet the building code. That's, that's a given.
Do you have to open up to the public?
Yep. Okay, seeing no more questions from the commission. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor or against XZA 215-5, the text amendment to Section 4.20.1, footnote 14, to allow bedrooms in the basement as long as the requirements of the building code are met? Town of Enfield applicant. If so, please come up and state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time? Second time? Third time? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Public hearing is closed. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve XZA 2105, text amendment to Section 4.20.1, footnote 14, to allow bedrooms in basements as long as the requirements of the building code are met? Town of Enfield applicant.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Roll call, please.
Nelson Correa.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Virginia Higley, four. Ken Nelson.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
All in favor, none against. Thank you, Jen. Thank Rick, please. Okay, moving on to other biz, nope, new business, or old business, I see none. New business, SPR 1858, 612 Hazard Avenue, site plan review application for adaptive reuse within the SDD zone to allow for a 43-unit apartment complex in the former Blair Manor facility. Meadow Manor LLC is the owner applicant. Map 110, Lot 343, SDD Zone. Okay. Welcome.
First time in 15 months that we've been able to meet people, so it's very exciting for us.
Well, hopefully you feel that way when you leave.
My name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury in the firm of Alter &amp; Pearson. In addition to comments I may make this evening, you're going to hear from Dana Steele of JR Russo, who is our
Start again. For the record, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury in the firm of Alter &amp; Pearson. In addition to my comments this evening, you're going to hear from Dana Steele of JR Russo, who is our project engineer. Scott Hesketh of FA Hesketh is our traffic engineering consultant. Wayne Bogdan is our environmental consultant, and Utkarsh Pontiel of Russell &amp; Dawson is our project architect. To remind everyone, we, we were here, not here, but we were together virtually most recently with respect to the zone change from Residence 44 Zone to Special Development District. This commission acted in its legislative capacity for a zone change on May 13, 2021. Prior to that date, we had appeared before the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency for the town of Enfield and made a presentation to them. And at that time, that agency made a determination that based on our presentation and the activities that we proposed, that no wetlands permit would, would be required. We did just receive a letter to that effect that I'll submit to the record. Apparently, I'm out of practice. Tonight, we're appearing before you, and as opposed to when you consider a zone change, tonight you're considering our site plan review application. And in this capacity, you act administratively to apply your regulations with respect to our proposal, to take the former Blair Manor property and put it into an adaptive reuse in accordance with your SDD zone to create 43 multifamily residential units within the existing building. Just to be clear, we propose no additions, no changes to the footprint of the building. The, as recited in your regulation, the sole purpose for the SDD zone, which you approved at your last meeting, is to enable the rehabilitation, adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorated, or underutilized buildings. Some of you, I'm sure, are aware of the history of Blair Manor and the fact that 2017, it was closed as a result of a bankruptcy and then a court order by the Superior Court of the State of Connecticut on behalf of a receiver that had been appointed, where the facility was closed and the residents required to vacate. Since then, the building has been vacant and has continued to deteriorate as a result of that. The, part of the guidance that you have in, in your regulation is that the application be compatible with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And your staff, in its memo, provided you with a reference to one part of your Plan of Conservation and Development, which is on page 34, talking about the Village District and the guidance that a mixed-use development was one of the goals of your Plan of Conservation and Development in that district. As you know, a Plan of Conservation and Development is directory, not compelling. It's an advisory document that you create every 10 years to give guidance to both the Planning and Zoning Commission in each of its different authorities to help direct the manner in which your community is developed. I did want to point out two other items within your Plan of Conservation and Development that I think speak to this application. At page 45, under Action 2.2.1, the statement is made that communities in Connecticut should offer choices of housing for different ages, incomes, location, and location preferences. Building renovation and reuse expands the actual amount of affordable housing units. And then at page 246, at least for me, and I, granted, I'm certainly not as familiar with your Plan of Conservation and Development as you are, is the only place I could find where the Special Development District is actually addressed. And it states, "Special Development District was created for the adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorating, or underutilized buildings. Any land use is permitted with the approval of the commission with a plan submitted for the restoration of the building." And that's really what this site plan application is about. We propose to completely rehabilitate and adapt this building to a multifamily use and bring it back to a productive asset to the community. Those of you who have had the opportunity to go by or visit that site recently can certainly see that it qualifies as a building that has suffered and is deteriorating as a result of being vacant for these past several years. We think that we meet all of the requirements of the SDD, Section 50.60, as itemized in your regulations. Dana will speak to many of those items in his presentation. But we feel that the most compelling reason that, that this commission should look favorably on this application is that it is an opportunity to take a building that will otherwise continue to deteriorate and put it to use exactly as provided in your Plan of Conservation and Development in terms of providing another housing choice within your community and also making it, taking advantage of the Special Development District Zone that you created within your regulations. We did not approach this property without a great deal of information and examination. And it simply will not work for a mixed-use type of development. It was developed as a single-story institutional residential facility. It served as a nursing home for, at least according to the information I read, more than 50 years. That's what it was built to be, and that's how it was developed. It's a one-story building with relatively low ceilings. It's a narrow building. If you look at the wings shown on, on the site plan that's on display on the easel, it does not lend itself to commercial development. Those of you who are familiar know that commercial users like to have a depth of anywhere from 70 to 80 feet. The wings of this building are about 46 feet, so that it would not lend itself to commercial retail use. In addition, the building wasn't built to take a second story. And so, it would have to be completely redone in order, structurally, in order to accept the second story, which would be defeating the purpose of trying to make an adaptive reuse of an existing building. As indicated in my first comments, we received the permission of the Wetlands Agency not to have to pursue a permit because we are not going outside the development envelope. This site has limitations. The Scantic River, as you can see, goes across this property in the corner, as shown on the plan. We have some escarpments related to the river, and we also have some wetlands on the site, none of which were touching with, with this adaptive reuse, but create limitations if, for example, the parking had to be expanded further than, than what we proposed on this, on the plan that you see before you in order to satisfy the parking requirements of a commercial activity. And finally, our clients examined whether or not a commercial use would be economically viable here. And so, they undertook an anecdotal reconnaissance of the commercial market at Enfield, which would indicate that the commercial centers nearest I-91 are still attracting tenants. When I drove by there today, one of the centers had a sign out that said it was full. The Enfield Mall notwithstanding, those properties seem to do well. As you move east on Hazard Avenue, the vacancy rate in the commercial developments that exist along that corridor seem to increase from center to center. And so, if there were to be more commercial development on this site, we would be competing with existing vacant spaces. That is not a, a good That is not a good method or practice for development to build new space to compete with older space. You can never financially catch up with existing space. On the other hand, there is a substantial market, we believe, for one and two-bedroom apartments that will have high-end finishes and will attract people in what is an active market for apartment rentals. So that the commercial component doesn't add any value to our proposal, we don't believe. In accordance with the regulation for the SDD Zone, it is up to the commission to determine whether or not our density is appropriate. That's found in Section 5.60.3 triple I. We've had Dana do an analysis of this density compared to the nearest other multifamily development. And he'll share that with you as well as an analysis of the densities that your regulation does allow in other types of development, multifamily developments. So you can gain some perspective on our density. I think what you're going to find is that our density is lower than any of those. We have less units per acre than anything existing or permitted under other parts of your regulation. All of the zoning standards are met by the application that you have before you. We meet all requirements for setbacks, buffers, open space, parking, and the like. And Dana will go through that in greater detail. We are proposing a very robust landscape plan to update and upgrade the site. And again, all the requirements for landscaping and buffering are met by the plan that you have, along with substantial improvements to the appearance of the building from Hazard Avenue in particular. We do have some photos of. Our client is a very experienced multifamily developer and has well over 1,000 units that it owns and operates. Thanks. I'll put this up and then pass out a smaller version. The upper pictures are pictures of a couple of projects that our client already owns and manages in Connecticut, has gone through the redevelopment process and upgraded the projects that were otherwise not particularly well-cared-for. And then they make a great effort on the interior of their projects. I guess you need to have a little closer look. With high-end finishes, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, recessed lighting, and a great deal of care taken with all of the outfitting of the units to make them as attractive as possible for prospective tenants. And they've been very successful, both in Connecticut and New York, undertaking this kind of development. Thanks. The each unit will have its own laundry facility so that you don't have the nuisance or discomfort of having to go to a common laundry. The floor plans that we filed show a spot for washer dryer in each of the units. Each unit will have its own entrance from the outside, so we don't have those long corridors that sometimes you find in older apartment complexes. Each unit will have parking spaces assigned to it that will be proximate to the unit's entrance so that they will have both security and convenience in being able to access their unit. The current building has its mechanical equipment on the roof behind a fairly substantial parapet. I couldn't see the equipment when I was at the site. The alternative that the developer will follow is that each unit will have mechanical room within it that will hold its hot water heater and the other mechanical equipment required for the property. And that the air conditioning compressor would be the only exterior mechanical unit outside. At the moment, the plan would be to have those on the ground, proximate to the unit. None will be visible from the public view from the property. And no new equipment will be placed on the roof so that you can be assured that the requirement that they won't be visible from the public view will be met. With that, I'm going to ask Dana to walk us through the site plan and describe the various aspects of it from his point of view. Talk about stormwater management, talk about landscaping, and the general development of the site.
Thanks, Peter. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Dana Steele. I'm a professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates. Our office is located at 1 Shoham Road in East Windsor. And I prepared the site plan that is before you this evening. And I'd like to run through it with you. I'm going to move this out of the way. As Peter mentioned, this property is now zoned in your SDD Zone, which is for adaptive reuse of vacant buildings. The property is 8.37 acres, located on the south side of Hazard Avenue, Route 190. The neighborhood for this property is, I think, appropriate for the use that we're proposing. The neighbors to the east and to the south is open space. So this denser development is not going to have an impact on a single-family home that's directly abutting of the property. To the west, it's about boarded by the Hazerville Water Company Utility Company. So again, not a single-family residential use. There are single-family uses across the state highway, but there's also businesses across the state highway as well. So it's a mixture of business and residential in this neighborhood. And we think that for those reasons, this is an appropriate use for the area. With regard to apartments, there is another apartment complex that is across the street to the west. It's called Skidico Garden Apartments, and it has 40 units. Just want to talk briefly about density. It was an issue that came up during the zone change application. As I mentioned, there's 43 units proposed for this 8.3-acre parcel. When it comes to density, your regulations tend to treat it in one of two ways. They either take the total units and divide by the total area, or they take the total units and divide by the number of buildable acres. And your regulations define that buildable acres as subtracting a portion of the wetlands and the steep slopes, those greater than 25%, and then coming up with a reduced area number and then computing the density on that basis. So in this particular case, our property contains about three-quarters of an acre of wetlands and another one and a third acres of steep slopes. And so when we subtract out 50% of the wetlands, 25% of the steep slopes, the developable acre would be 7.65, so down from 8.37 to 7.65. Take the number of units we're proposing and divide by that. It's 5.6 units per developable acre or 5.1 per acre generally. The reason why I'm mentioning both is that your SDD regulation doesn't mention either of these. In fact, it just says that the density shall be determined by the commission. So you have discretion with that regard. And for that reason, I wanted to, in helping you in making that determination, help you to understand what some of the other densities are in the area, particularly with Skidico Garden, which is very relevant being across the street. So Skidico Garden has 5.93 acres, about a third of an acre of wetlands, and about a half an acre of steep slopes, bringing the total down to 5.6 acres. So divide 40 by 5.63, and you have 7.1 units per developable acre. So 7.1 is quite a bit higher density than what we're proposing at 5.6 or 5.1. So in addition to that, we took a look at your regulations in regard to other multifamily uses. For example, there's the assisted living use, which allows 10 units per acre. The continuing care communities allow five units per acre, similar to ours. The housing for elderly, 16 units per acre. And the multifamily housing development, which is one of your newer regulations, which allows 10 units per developable acre. So even in looking at the range of multifamily options that are in your regulation, we're at the low end of that density. So I think that what we're proposing is from a standpoint of comparing to other uses and densities within your regulations, that we seem to be in a conservative place with regard to density. Moving on to the site plan.
I wasn't blowing anywhere if you got that some.
So I'd like to draw your attention to Sheet 3 of the plan set, which is the existing conditions plan. This shows you what exists on the site today. There's this, the building in the center of the site, it contains three wings. I'll be referring to them by their direction. We got the south wing, which heads towards the back. We have the east wing, which heads towards Summers in the east. And then we have the west wing, which heads towards the Hazerville Water Company property and more the center of town. So the property is, has an existing one-story building. It's a wood-structured building with a brick facade. And we did take a look at the potential of a mixed-use development for this property. We had the architect take a look at that. And the first problem, as Peter mentioned, was it's one-story. And when you talk about mixed use, one of the problems is you really don't want people that are going to a business or employees of that business to be walking by the window of someone who lives, you know, on the same level. That's why the ideal configuration for mixed use is multi-story. So you have the residential above and the commercial on the ground floor. And it's the vertical separation that works well with mixed use. And that's going to be difficult here because structurally, the building is not designed for a second story. It would be difficult and cost prohibitive. And secondly, adding another story just essentially doubles the size of the building. And where are we going to park everyone? We only have so much room for parking. And essentially, with what we're proposing here, we're maxing out already all of the available parking for the site. We can maybe fit a few more spaces, but not enough to account for any kind of a major renovation like that. So that's is another problem. Peter mentioned the low ceilings. This building doesn't have particularly high ceilings. In a residential application, that's okay because the rooms are small. So proportionally, height to width, it seems right. But when you get into a commercial type of application where the rooms are bigger but you got a low ceiling, it doesn't feel right. And so it's not going to be attractive to commercial type of development. So that seems to be a problem as well. And again, this is an adaptive reuse, which means we're trying to work with the building that we have, not tear it down and come up with a completely new building. Peter mentioned the width as well, only 46 feet wide. It's really not, it's not ideal for commercial because they need a certain efficiency of depth for those types of uses to work. And so that's also a problem. And it just fundamentally, as Peter mentioned, this building was designed for residential use, and that's the use that we're proposing. It makes sense to stick with what the original designers of the building intended with residential type of uses for the property. The building is over 35,000 square feet in footprint area. As I mentioned, wood construction with brick facade. It does have a partial basement under the east wing with a walkout to the back. That's this portion of the building here, and the walkout is on the backside. The building is already served by water, sewer, gas, electric, all the necessary utilities. And we're going to continue to use those same utilities for the new use. There is about 69 parking spaces right now on the site. I say about because if you go out there and look, you don't see any striping. It's so faded and so gone that there's no striping there. So we'll be restriping everything so that it'll be clearly delineated. So about 69 spaces as I measure it out and see how many could fit on the site existing. Right now, the drainage for the site is sheet flow. So the parking lots sheet towards leak-offs at various spots along the perimeter of the parking and near the entrance to the driveway as well. And it leaks off into a drainage ditch, a grass swale, that starts off along the property frontage, goes through a culvert under the driveway, and then continues around the eastern end of the building towards the back, towards the Scantic River. So that's the general flow and direction of the storm drainage for the site currently. And there is a rather large cleared open area in the back, behind the east wing and to the left of the south wing on your plan, that will be a nice area for passive recreation for the residents. So it does have that feature as well. It's also private. It's secluded. You can't see that outdoor area from the street. So that's a nice feature as well. Currently, the site contains a loading dock area in the front of the building, which is not ideal aesthetically. So right now, there's a concrete platform here and the area has bumper blocks on it, like trucks could back up to it and make deliveries. Not really tractor-trailers, probably box trucks and things were making deliveries to the nursing home at one time. And so that's something that we like to do away with, that we see as something we can improve upon. Right now, the site has one curb cut on the state highway, and that curb cut has good sightline. Our traffic engineer has looked at that. And it does have an existing sign in the front that has exterior lighting going to it. And the intention obviously would be to reface that sign, not to leave it saying Blair Manor. It will be changed to Meadow Manor, our current project name, and that'll be the subject of a separate application because I believe they don't have the details for that sign. And that seems, in my experience, seems like what most of my clients do. They don't have the sign, figure it out at the time we get to this stage, so they treat that as a separate application. So that's the existing site. If you have any questions about the existing site before I move on to what's proposed, I'd be happy to answer them. Moving along. Yes, sir.
How high are the existing ceilings?
They are about 850 inches.
Okay, because I just went through both sets of plans, and there are zero measurements on this building anywhere.
On the architectural plans?
On any of the plans. There's not even a footprint measurement of this building. So you're, I'm trying to come up with your square footage here on the units, which seems way substandard to what the regulation calls for because it's not elderly housing, it's not assisted housing. It would be multifamily, and you don't meet the square footage for the units. And before I bring it up, I wanted to put a ruler to it, but you don't have any measurements on anything. I mean, the center, you keep going back to, you know, the building was built as a residential facility. No, the building was built as a No, the building was built as a nursing home and the center of this building was the nursing hub. And the center of this building is a lot wider than 40 feet in both directions. And if I were to do rough math, it's 300 feet across by, you know, maybe 200 feet deep, the center square. So why would you have to add an addition to this building to get commercial use in it? To meet the regulation, the plan of conservation and development that you keep referring back to that this building doesn't meet and you can't put commercial in it? And all you're referring to is the wings. But the whole center of this building was never residential. That's where the nurses stations were, the cafeterias were, everything else in this building. So it was meant to have space in the center. You just want to eliminate it.
Well, the, the center area here is still on the same floor. Does it have higher ceilings than the rest of the building?
It does have higher ceilings, but we're using that as empty space for the residential.
So the, this, this area, the, the other thing we mentioned is that this area is still on the same, same floor. There's no vertical separation between, between this space here and the, and the other, the other wings of the property. So it's, it still doesn't lend itself to a commercial use there. We are proposing on our floor plan, some of that area is common area. There's a gym in there, there's a recreation room, a mailroom. So there's some, there's some more congregating kind of uses proposed for those areas. So.
If you, if you were to rent the gym out, would it be considered commercial space?
Sure.
Okay. So you could get commercial space in there if you wanted to because you're doing it now just for free. You're going to.
As part of a.
A tenant lease.
An accessory use of the, of the.
Or they pay additional money every month towards access to the facilities.
Mr. Chairman, maybe you could, and I know it's not typical that a commission would provide suggestions, but what is it that you think would go there as a commercial use?
That's, what you just said is correct. It's not my suggestion.
I understand, but.
He brought up the gym, not me. So the only difference between commercial and not commercial is you're saying you're going to give it to the tenants, whether at a fee or not, it doesn't matter to us. But a gym is a commercial facility. And you've spent two meetings now talking about how you can't put commercial space in this building. But you're putting a gym in it. That's commercial space.
But a commercial gym would be much larger.
Okay, square footage of the units. Where did you come up with the square footage and how do you feel they meet the regulation? Because it doesn't meet any of the regulations.
If I could speak to that.
Yep.
The STD zone doesn't have any specificity with the size of, for the size of units. We looked at all of the other regulations that you have, and frankly, you vary from not quite as small as our units, but almost as small to units as large as our largest unit. What is important here, and I think we, we haven't done a good job of explaining this. When you take an existing building and you try for an adaptive reuse, you're trying to get a viable number of units economically because it's a major undertaking to renovate a building like this, and also to meet the market demand. And because your regulation lacks any direction with respect to the size of units, we elected to make a whole variety of units. Our units range from about 560 square feet to 1,300 square feet. There's a range of units sizes within our proposal. The summer studios, because there's a market for studio apartments. 20-something people who travel or are out of town on business frequently like studio apartments. The smaller one-bedroom units are appropriate for a single person to use. The larger one-bedroom units for a couple, there are two-bedroom units, could be two unmarried people. So we tried to bridge that gap. And the fact that your regulation doesn't have a number makes it difficult for us to do otherwise. And it makes it, I think it makes it difficult for the commission to say, well, that's too small. Well, that's not what your regulation does.
Show me in my regulations where it shows you can have a 500-square-foot one-bedroom apartment. You didn't come in the middle. You went below the lowest number. And in the regulations, it's clear, it's not assisted living, it's not elderly housing, it's multifamily housing. And you're not even close to meeting the multifamily. You're picking and choosing bits and pieces of the plan of conservation and our regulation to fit your needs. And they're not. We went through this when they did the zone change that I was against because of this. This doesn't, your square footages don't work. Commercial space absolutely is part of the plan of conservation and development. As far as the building not meeting the size that's adequate for you for apartments, take two of these 500-square-foot units and make one 1,000-square-foot unit. Now you meet the regulation. And we just had the same thing at the old Hazardville School. And they made it work. And they came in with commercial space and they made their units larger. Because that's what our plan says and that's what our regulations say.
So when you say commercial space, I mean, I can think of some possible, they really would be designed to serve the people who are living there. Because it's, nobody's going to drive to 612 Hazard Avenue unless there's something there. I mean, we can't put a restaurant in the middle of this residential development. Perhaps we could do some very small commercial uses there. But you got to help me a little bit in understanding what you think is an appropriate commercial use. Is it 1,000 square feet? Is it 2,000 square feet of commercial space? That, you know, we don't have, because there's no guidance in your regulation. There's no guidance in the.
It says mixed use.
But, so we say, okay, we're going to charge all the residents for the use of the gym. Does that satisfy you?
Well, you could open it up to the public, too. Why couldn't you let the public come in, too?
It's not big enough.
How big is, that's, that's why I have no numbers. How big is the center square of this building? 7, 8, 9, 10,000 square feet? It's pretty big. But we have no numbers on anything.
There's no scale either.
There is a scale, but the scale's different on every page. So like, when you first started out, it's not our place to make decisions or suggestions to you. But it is our place to uphold the plan. That's only a guide when it works against you, but it's enforceable when it works in your favor. So we have the plan that says mixed use. We have our regulations under multifamily that your square footage isn't even close. Even assisted living, it doesn't meet that. You came in below all the thresholds, not even trying to compromise with us. So you want us to compromise with you. What have you given in other than cramming 500-square-foot one-bedroom apartments in this building? Who does that benefit? We're building apartments they're getting $2,800 a month for. So Enfield can afford higher-end rents. So if you did 1,000-square-foot two-bedroom apartment, you meet the regulation. You get more money for your rent. Everybody's happy. If you open the gym up to the public, he just came up with a great idea. Little more revenue for the owners of the building. That's what our regulations are. And we just did it with the Hazardville School. And if we do anything different with this, then we're all over the place with the way we're going to follow our regulations.
Dana, why don't you go ahead and what I think we're going to ask you to do is we'll finish our presentation this evening. You can make other comments. And then what we would do is ask you to continue this and we'll come back to you in response to your comments.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to address these now.
No, I'm glad you did.
Because as he's, he's going into the futures of what you want to make the building. So maybe we can address or he can come up with ideas to correct some of these issues.
Onward.
Go ahead.
Hey Dana, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I wanted to just mention briefly here to some of the other aspects of the site that you can see well on sheet four of our plan set called the layout plan. And that is that the property does contain flood zone right around the river area here, but we're nowhere near the flood zone. We're not having any impact on the flood zone. It also contains an aquifer protection area. I mentioned our neighbor next door is the Hazardville Water Company. They have public, public supply wells. They're not right near the property line. They're all the way on the other side of their property. But around those wells, they determine what the area of influence is and the area that needs to be protected. And that line is shown on our plans here. And it's this, this corner of the property, the southwest corner. And again, we're not proposing any impacts. And our uses doesn't even, isn't even a regulated use within the aquifer protection area. So we are, we wanted to just note that that's there. Additionally, you'll notice on the plan, there's all these little dots, particularly in this northeast corner of the, of the property. There's some others around the property. Those are monitoring wells. And they were, they were installed many years ago because of a gasoline spill that occurred across the street at the Tyre Country Facility. The plume went under the road and came onto this, this property. And so the property at the time consented to have the monitoring wells installed so they could determine whether or not it was impacting the nursing home. And wanted to make sure that it wasn't creating an unsafe condition. And so they, they, we didn't know all of this when we got the property. We just saw there were wells. We didn't know what they were. So we did some research. We hired an environmental consultant to investigate it. And they got to the bottom of it and discovered what was going on. So One Earth Environmental did a report. It's included in your packet. And they concluded that, that those wells were guarding the gasoline leak that occurred back in the 1980s. And the remediation efforts for that have ceased. And the plume is still there, but it's remained static. It's no longer seemed to be a problem. The plume is not impacting the proposed use. The proposed use will not impact the plume. And the proposed use will not impact the aquifer area either. So we had our environmental consultant look at all of those things and he summarized it in a report that we included. And so we did that primarily because staff told us early on, this might be a wetlands concern. And so we did it for the Wetlands Commission, but we're including it for you as well in case you have any questions. Mr. Bugden is here if you do have any questions. But the, the Wetlands Commission, as Peter mentioned, ruled no jurisdiction because we are staying within the existing envelope that was previously developed. We feel that that was the appropriate decision. So.
Dana, what is the heat source of this building? Gas?
Gas.
Gas.
All right. So for, for the proposed layout, because we're converting these, these wing area here to, to units with exterior doors, we need a sidewalk in front of each of those units that, that the, that the doors can connect to, that people can walk to and get to the common areas. Because there's no interior hallways to access the common areas inside. So you have to walk out around to get, so we have sidewalks for pedestrian safety and access to, to access those spaces, including the mailroom and, and the gym, as was mentioned. There are some of the amenities that the owner is proposing for the, for the tenants. The parking that we're proposing is an expansion from, as I said, about 69 to 97 spaces. The main expansion is in the back here behind the west wing, kind of tucked between the south wing and the west wing. And that's because we need some spaces that are close to each door. So they, we have people that can park close to their, their unit. Your regulations require two spaces per unit. And so that's, that's approximately what we have in each, in each section. We have about two, enough spaces for two per, per unit. So your regulations would require a minimum of 86. We're proposing 97. So we have a few more than your regulations say we need. But our client feels that it's good to have a few more than, than the minimum for visitors and things like that. So we feel that what we're proposing is, is not excessive and particularly because we need enough for each wing, we have the, a little more than, than the minimum. Regulation requires four accessible spaces, which we are proposing in the same location they were for the, for the nursing home. And the accessibility, accessible route for those spaces goes to the units which are accessible, which is in this portion, where we did have a little more space and there was room to comply with those, those requirements so that the rooms meet ADA standards for accessibility. There's five of them in the development. So there's a, the building code requires a certain number of them to be accessible and we've accommodated that. Trash removal, right now, as I mentioned, it appears that trash is being maybe picked up at the loading dock area, which is not a great location aesthetically. So what we've done instead is we've created three, three areas. One at the end of the east wing, one at the end of the south wing, and one at the end of, of the west wing. And so each of those contains two dumpsters. And I checked with Summer Sanitation. They said for development this side, two dumpsters, two recycling and two would be enough. We have three and because we think it'll be more efficient and will work better. So, so we're proposing those. They are chain link fence enclosed, privacy slats on them. And for this one, which you, which you can otherwise see from the street, we're proposing landscaping to screen it. So there's arborvitae that will grow up and so you won't even see it from the street because, because of that.
And there will be recycling dumpsters, too?
Yes. Each one has one trash, one recycling. Yep. And the town engineer commented that he wanted a stronger strength concrete. That's in your report. So we're going to, we're going to update that and enhance that so that we have the 4,000 PSI strength that he's looking for. Standard notes we'll also add to the plan. That was his other comment. That's something that we typically do, but I didn't put it on the cover sheet. So we will, we will do that. The utility plan. Utility plan is sheet six of the plan sets. And I just want to note, first of all, the storm drainage proposed for this site. You see there is one, two, three, four, five catch basins proposed, all connected with piping to a new stormwater basin. This is an infiltration basin. The soils here are very permeable. They're identified as A soils, meaning they're the best soils for infiltration. So this is really an ideal site for utilizing that best management practice. It's environmentally sensitive. It's green. It's, it's an appropriate method for dealing with, with stormwater. Because we are adding impervious area to the site, we need to mitigate that by, by getting more of it back into the ground to mimic what's happening now where the rain falls on this area and it can soak into the ground. And when you put pavement over it, it can't do that. So, so to make up for that, we're creating a basin in the front where it can hold the water so it has a chance to soak in before it overflows. During most storms, water will never leave this basin. And everything that flows to this basin will just sit there until it soaks into the ground and it'll be gone. Only during the most extreme, like 150-year, just barely 100-year storm, you'll see some, some discharge. And then what it'll do is it'll overflow into the swale and go where the site was normally going now. One of the things that we noticed out here with the site is this culvert under the, under the driveway, you can't even see it. You see the head walls, but there's no pipe. That's because it's completely filled with sediment. And the amazing thing is, as the water comes off the site into this, and the culvert's like completely blocked, it still doesn't. like completely blocked, it still doesn't flood the road or over top. It just tells you how sandy it is. So it's a good site for drainage, but we are going to clean out that culvert so that it can be maintained and it's going to function even better.
How does that continue to?
So it continues along the road and then turns. You see the contours here. It continues here down a swale and you can see the flood plain limits here, the little fingers here. That's a ditch that takes the water from this area into the Scannock River.
And there's the scarpments back there, correct?
Yes, there are.
So the water's even heading in?
So what we're doing is making it better. We're going to be stopping that water from getting there, except during the most extreme storms. And so it's going to continue to function like it has been, just a little bit better. Your police department also provided comments. They wanted a stop sign out at the driveway, which is, makes sense. So we'll add that to our plan, showing the stop sign and the stop bar. They wanted to confirm that the sight line works and can be maintained and we have confirmed that. Our traffic engineer will speak to that in just a moment. But wanted to just note too that this area in the back, we could have sent it this way instead of around to the front. We sent it this way because we want to avoid these escarpment soils. We want to keep everything away from those and protect them. So we're not sending any more water there. Some of the roof does go there now, but we're not, we're going to have less water going there, which will be an improvement from erosion standpoint.
It will make the water?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Yeah. So that's, the only other thing I wanted to mention about utilities was we did also get comments from your sewer department and they noted that they wanted this lateral sewer ladder particularly to be videoed to make sure that it's working properly and we'll agree to that as a condition as well. So with that said, I'd like to talk next about traffic if that's okay? So Scott's here from F.A. Hesketh and I'd ask Scott to come up now and share his findings with us.
Can you sit there or take this? I'll take a seat if you don't mind. Good evening. For the record, my name is Scott Hesketh. I'm a licensed traffic engineer in the state of Connecticut, the firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates. Our office is in East Granby, Connecticut, and I'm the author of the March 30th, 2021 Traffic Impact Report, which has been submitted in support of this application. As you've heard about the site plan, they're proposing 43 units of apartments out on Hazard Avenue, Route 190, here in the town of Enfield. In the course of preparing our report, we researched the files of the Department of Transportation. They had traffic volume counts out on Route 190 at the town line. The roadway is carrying approximately 12,800 vehicles on a daily basis, the morning peak hour of 900 vehicles, an afternoon peak hour of 1,070 vehicles. They're based on 19, I'm sorry, 2019 counts. We used a 1% per year growth rate to grow the traffic to a designed year of 2022 in order to conduct our capacity analysis calculations. The proposed nursing home, I mean, the former nursing home had an average daily traffic volume of about 242 to 300 trips on a daily basis, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' report. And their peak hour volumes were 17 or 20 trips during the morning peak hour, or 21 or 22 trips during the afternoon peak hour, depending on if you use the size of the facility or the number of beds contained in the facility. The proposed residential development will have a trip generation of about 315 trips on a daily basis, or 15 to 70 trips more than the former use. And during the peak hours, will have a trip generation of 20 trips during the morning peak hour, 27 trips during the afternoon peak hour, which is approximately three trips more during each peak hour than the former nursing home use. So basically similar traffic volumes for both of the uses. So the impacts to the local roadway network should be minimal at best. We did however, look at the intersection of Hazard Avenue and the proposed site driveway or the existing site driveway for capacity and levels of service. The Route 190 approaches will operate at a level of service A during peak hours, meaning minimal delays. It may be occasionally someone slowing down to make a left-hand turn. There's room for people to scoot around them and bypass them. So that should not be a major concern. The site driveway approach will operate at a level of service C during peak hours with average delays of between 17 and 22 seconds per vehicle. Very good levels of service and again, similar to the levels of service which were experienced under the former use. We did look at the available intersection site distances at the site driveway. The site distances are in excess of 500 feet in each direction, which meet the condot requirements for an approach speed of 45 miles per hour. Hazard Avenue out in this area is posted at 35 miles per hour. So the 85th percentile speed, which is the basis of measuring site distance, is probably in the 42 to 45 mile per hour range. So we believe there's sufficient site distance to provide safe and efficient service into and out of the site. It's my understanding that during the zone change hearing, some on the commission expressed desire to have a mixed use type of development on this particular parcel. Although that's not proposed here, I would note that any mixed use development on this parcel would likely have a higher trip generation potential than the use which is proposed in no matter what configuration or size development that would be proposed on this facility. So the development which is proposed before you this evening has the same or similar impacts to the former development and certainly has a lesser impact than any other use which might be proposed for the property. That's my presentation in a nutshell. I'll be available to answer any questions the commission might have at the appropriate time. And at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over and present to you some site landscaping information on the site. And I only hesitate because I was out of the room for the first part of the development and I'm not sure if you covered it, so.
Right on, right on schedule.
Okay, thanks Scott. So yeah, just like to just talk about the landscaping that we're proposing for the site and the site lighting. So we'll start, probably should start with the lighting because in the order of the sheets, that's what comes next. So Sheet 7, lighting. I'll skip ahead in my notes here and note just briefly. So we prepared a photometric plan which shows what the foot candle levels will be for, from the proposed lighting. There's not much site lighting right now at the site. There are lighted bollards in locations around the east wing and in front of the main hub area. And so we're proposing to add some additional lighted bollards near the entrance and along the parking that's closest to the road. And then a pole mounted fixture in the back where we really don't have anything close to building and then some building mounted fixtures. So all that combined shows that the foot candle level is pretty modest as far as the light level goes, but these are full cutoff fixtures, so they, dark sky compliant and comply with your regulations. And so we are, feel that this is a compliant lighting plan. There was no spillage beyond the property limits. As you look, see all zeros around the limits of the property. So that's the lighting plan. Next is the landscape plan.
Are you replacing all the parking lot lights?
There are no parking lot lights. There are lighted bollards. It's only lights that are there now. They're going to remain. And we can replace them if they're not working, but intent is that they would remain and we'd add additional ones and one pole light and then building lights, so.
So you're not looking at operating out to an LED fixture?
They would be LED, yeah. All the new lights would be LED. The existing bollard lights are, I'm sure are not LED. They're much older and they may be upgraded at some point, but I think their intention is to work with what they got, if it's working, and upgrade as needed and as money allows. Okay? Regarding the landscaping, your regulations have several landscaping requirements when it comes to parking lots. You require interior landscape islands. So that would be this sort of barbell shaped island in the middle of the parking area here. These end parking islands at various locations and so required to have 15% of our parking spaces be landscaped, which we've complied with. And then within those, we've placed trees. So your regulations require canopy trees based on the number of parking spaces and based on the number we're proposing. We need 19. And so there's 10 existing, counting existing trees that you see around the parking area. So we're adding nine more to comply, fully comply with the parking, with the parking tree requirement. In addition to parking trees, regulations require street trees along the front edge of the road. In this case, about half the site is a dense wooded area, so it's got plenty of trees. The other half is not. It's a lawn area, but there are three existing trees within that area. One of them 60 inches in diameter. It's really big. And so we're preserving all of those big trees. There are some fairly large trees in the back area that do have to come out because of the parking, but everything in the front, other than a pine tree on the side and one ornamental here in the front, everything else is staying. So we think we've been sensitive to the existing landscaping. We're enhancing the existing landscaping. You're going to have more trees, more shade, and I think it'll be nice from that perspective.
Snow?
Yes, snow. Good question. With regard to, just to finish up on landscaping, in addition to that, talking with the applicant, they would like to propose foundation plantings along the building. So we didn't initially show those. Regulations don't really require a certain amount of foundation plantings, but it's going to look better with foundation planting. So we're going to provide a table like I've shown here in our presentation, shrubs, roses and some perennials, a mixture of that in a bark mulch bed. So in all these areas right up against the building where, all the way around the west wing, we're going to have those foundation plantings as well. To your question about snow, that was a question that came up at the wetlands meeting as well. I'm going to turn you back to this layout plan, although this isn't shown on the plans that we submitted because we got the comments back from wetlands. I took the time to take a look at and see where snow storage would be. And so I've delineated that here on this plan. And when we come back with a revised plan, you'll see that on your copy. But there's a large area to the west of the parking that's available for snow storage. There's the center island in the back that's available. There's a green space in the way back of the south wing that's available. Not as much over on the east wing where the existing vegetation is tight. And so we'd have to clear more vegetation to make room for snow, which doesn't make sense. But we do show an area along the perimeter here where snow can be piled. And like with any project, when you start running out of places to park, you can pile the snow in the parking spaces if you got a few more than you need. But at some point, the tenants are not going to stand for that and you're going to have to truck it off the site. And when you get two, three feet of snow, as we occasionally do, that's usually what ends up happening, so.
Could you store it in the detention bin?
Yeah, a lot of places like to do it. It's not advisable because it's using up storage capacity, even though you don't tend to get as big a storm in the winter, like you do during the flash flood kind of thunderstorms like you get this time of year. It's still not a recommended practice to put the snow into the basin.
I just see it once you clean the culvert out, I mean, you're going to want that snow belt to run that way anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be the first time someone's tried to do that, but from our standpoint, we're not recommending that. So I don't know, Peter. I think that covers my presentation. We've already had a discussion about the building. We've already heard that they don't like the size of the smaller units. What do we want to do at this point?
If we have the ceiling elevation? We want to give you a view of the building that's proposed to renovate soon.
Take this down?
The, those of you who've been out to the site know that that center core is forward and prominent. When you come to the site, you see that more than the wings that are to the east and west of the core center. When we go back to our client and talk about the size of the units and how that issue might be addressed that you raised, Mr. Chairman, for example, the number of doors may change if we start to combine units, for example. And so I'm a little hesitant to go too far into the floor plans and the units themselves, except to say that we still are going to want to maintain a mix of different sized units. Our clients have a lot of experience in the management and operation of buildings like this and they know that different people come with different needs and we try to address that. And this is not intended to be a $2,800 a month.
I understand.
Okay. They have to work to a great extent within the framework of the existing building and they've got to make it economically viable. That's the whole idea of adaptive reuse. But in general, if you have some response to this in a either positive or negative way, we would like to know that so that when we come back to you again at the next opportunity that we have, if there are particular issues, we want to be able to address them all at once. We think that Russell and Dawson, our architects, have done a really good job of trying to bring this property back to a level of appearance that it certainly lost over the last four or five years. And before that, my recollection is that it suffered for considerable time before it was closed by the court. So we're interested in your general reaction to the appearance from Hazard Avenue. As Dana indicated, it provides some privacy because of the way the lot is wooded. When you approach from the east, you don't see this property at all until you're by it. Coming from the west, it's a little more visible, although not, it is in a wide open space even coming from the I-91 area. So that with the retention of the trees really breaks up the mass of the building and we think, we think we can turn this into something the community can be very proud of. And exactly what the SDD is designed to accomplish. And I've certainly heard your comments, Mr. Chairman, and we'll have a long talk with our client about. What I wrote on my list was to revisit the size of the units, to consider ways to add a commercial element that would fit in with the nature of this use. We're not going to have a discotheque there, so.
We don't want.
No, we don't want. We want to attract appropriate residential tenants, not anything else. If we can find a way to incorporate this mixed use, we will ask Scott to take another look at the traffic. We have such good levels of service here that I don't think it's going to raise an issue, but we'll have to update that as well. And then as Dana indicated, he'll have the snow storage plan or snow storage on the plan when we come back. Is there anything that I missed?
No. I just want to explain, the Hazardville School, they thought we were giving them a hard time. They created a plan, they made it work. I want you guys to understand, there's a bigger picture here. We have the largest commercial building in the town empty, pretty much empty, and they're going to try to do the same thing. So if we allow every So if we allow every commercial building to be converted to a hundred percent residential, cramming in these little apartments, what's going to happen to the square? Because that won't be mixed use anymore. Well, we let you guys do it. We let the Hazardville School do it, you know, and that's why the plan was written for mixed use. You brought up they're going to put a gym in there. Maybe you can make the gym open to the public or family. I, I think there's ways you can work it into your building without destroying your plan. But we got a pretty big problem on our hands right now in town, and we got to just kind of follow suit. And you know what's good for them is good for you, and that's what we're trying to do. So we're absolutely willing to work with you, any changes or suggestions you have, but you have to understand where we're coming from. And it's going to be coming in the next year or two, and we're going to have to face it. So we need to back up what we decide to do there. And the regulations were written away. We didn't write them, but we got to follow them. And that's what I'm trying to do, at least as a commissioner. So don't think we're picking on you, because if you go and watch the Hazardville School, we did the same exact thing, and they made it work, and I'm ninety-nine percent positive we're going to make it work with you. It's just working out the bugs to make everybody happy. Go ahead, Ginny.
Can we have better measurements on the plans?
I want measurements on the plans.
I have that on my list, measurement of buildings. No problem. And Mr. Chairman, we don't think you're picking on us.
No, I, I know, but I, the clients here and just, it's not just about this property, and that's what we have to be concerned about, so.
If I could add just one more thing, you, there's the mixed use issue, and then there's also the size of the units. And, and I, I looked at the regulations too, and I, and I, I saw the same thing, that this was on the, the small end, we'll say. It was on the small end of, of the types of, that, that you have in your, in, in your regulations. And so when we had that discussion, we said, well, well, could you just, you know, eliminate a unit and make them a little bit bigger? And it's, part of the problem is that, is that there is interior walls in.
Same exact conversation we had with the Hazardville School. Same thing.
Was, was, was that an adaptive reuse? SDD?
Yeah, I believe it was. Yeah. You know, they're going to preserve the historic building, and they're, all their walls are block, you know, because it's a school from nineteen hundred, and they had the same restraints. But they, again, for their benefit, tried to squeeze as much as they could into the building, and we even worked with them on the commercial space that's in the lower level. You know, it's small, but it's there.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jen.
The Hazardville School fell under the Plan Design Special Permit regulations for the Hazardville Design Overlay District. So the, they had actually edited the, or proposed a change to the regulations, which the commission adopted, which included specific standards as to sizes of units. This, under the Special Development District regulations, obviously, you can see that there aren't any specific standards written into them. But I just wanted to point out that there are only a couple other Special Development District zones in town, one of which being Bigelow Commons. So I, and that was, they have a whole range of different unit sizes, and I just, I just wanted to draw your attention more to that as a, as a compromise, or comparison. I know that Hazardville School is closer in proximity to this site, and it was just most recently approved, but as far as approvals and standards applying go, I think that because Bigelow is sort of approved under the same standards as what this would be under, being approved under, I just wanted to throw that out there for, for your information in comparison.
I don't believe Bigelow has five hundred square foot units.
They have a lot of different sizes of units. I don't know.
We will inquire, see what.
And they also have commercial space.
Right.
They do.
Isn't the gym open to the public?
There's everything. Yeah. Attorneys, offices, everything.
But it used to be open to, you could join their gym.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics on that.
I, I'm, I do know they could go to the pool, you could buy like a membership to the gym and access to the pool. So I don't know if it still happens.
I, I'm not sure about that, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a comparison.
Yeah. Thank you, Jen, for sharing that. Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just to, as Jen clarifying that, that, that Hazardville School is not a Special Development District, so it wasn't adaptive reuse. We saw this as, as a little bit different because the whole concept of adaptive reuse is you work with the building you got, and that includes interior walls. So it's not necessarily mean it can't be done, but, but that, that was our thinking, is that, is that adaptive reuse is trying to work with what you got and do the best you can with, with what you got. So, but we'll take another look at it. We, we're hearing your concern. Thank you.
Watch the meeting, because they said the same thing, Dana, and they made it work. And even though it was something different, it still had to meet certain square footage requirements and the commercial space and.
I guess I was, you, you mentioned that you wanted to meet the regulation. Which regulation do you want it to meet?
Multifamily, I would say, because this is a multifamily. It doesn't meet any of the other ones. It's not age restricted.
You mean the multifamily housing district?
What was the one?
The newest one? Or, because in my presentation, I, I mentioned.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We have written down multifamily housing district as one bedroom, the minimum being nine hundred square feet, and the maximum twelve hundred. And our two bedrooms minimum is eleven hundred, and our max seventeen hundred square feet.
We're not going to be able to do that.
So, yeah, I understand that. So we're going.
We also have the large flexible residential housing square footage, where they have studio efficiencies as six hundred square feet. One bedroom is seven hundred square feet. Two bedroom is nine hundred square feet.
That's under design standards.
No, that's under the large flexible residential housing. So I, I just wrote down a note of the, as you were discussing it.
Oh, yeah. We're looking at the same thing.
Yeah.
Page fifty-eight.
Probably. But yeah, it's the large flexible residential housing, and as, as Georgie said, that we have the multifamily housing district, which is another standard, and then what the.
Right. They're not going to, the multifamily is not going to work. It's not.
It's a little bit too big.
Yeah.
But we could certainly take a look at those design standards that are on page fifty-eight.
Six hundred for a studio.
See where we come out.
Seven hundred for a one bedroom.
Maybe they could recommend.
Nine hundred for a two bedroom. They can like that. That's, he's saying, but the multifamily is like a thousand.
Those, those, we can't.
Right. So if, if the commissions are okay, I think if we were to hold them to the design standard square footage, it's a compromise on us and them to make it work in this building.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. To clarify, you're talking about the Plan Design Special Permit that the Hazardville School also followed, or was it, which section was that?
On page fifty-eight of one forty-four, Design Standards.
For Large Flexible Residential Housing. That's the title of this.
Stop using the computer faster than we can.
It's four point seven oh point eight. Section D.
Okay. So, all right, so there's the, the Large Flexible Residential Housing. And I just wanted to also point out that the Plan Design Special Permit standard, say one bedrooms can be six hundred and fifty square feet, and two bedrooms can be eight hundred square feet. So that's another standard I just wanted to let you know about.
Hazardville School go under.
That, the Plan Design Special Permit.
What about studios?
The commission did not want to include studios.
Well, they have studios.
Okay, so it would make more sense as a comparison.
Unless you end up losing the studios to increase the square foot. Again, I'm not right.
We're going to have to go back to the drawing.
So we're willing to work with you, but we're not willing to go and just.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So do we have to keep the plans or?
Yeah, I kept the plans. I'm going to keep them. But just in case, so they don't have to bring, they don't need all new site plans or anything.
No. Just plans.
Well, it's, the, the, the heavy lifting here will be the architecture and, and working out the structural components of the building. That's the hard, hard of that.
All right. Any other questions from the commission?
When would, go ahead, sir. When would you be available for another meeting?
I would put you on the next agenda if you could get it done. So we're trying to work with you.
Two weeks.
Yep, it's, I'm trying to pull up the calendar, June tenth.
Yeah, because we, we're off of August.
You don't put the next.
What's that?
June tenth.
Yeah.
The one after that is June twenty-fourth. June twenty-fourth.
I don't know if they're going to get all this done by June tenth, but if they can, you know, just try to work with them to get them back. Unless you've got a lot brewing in that office, Jen. No?
We have a lot of things in the works that we're just waiting for, for them to come forward.
We think we can be back to you for June tenth.
Sounds good.
I, I mean, we're working with you on the date. So if you go on the agenda, if something comes up and you have to postpone, we understand. I know there's a lot of work with the architect, and everybody's so shorthanded right now, it's insane.
All right, we'll do our best.
If everybody had a Dana working for them, they'd be all set.
I was just saying this, I was just going to say the same thing.
Very thorough.
He is very thorough.
That's why we have him.
Okay, so.
You just continue this matter to June tenth.
I'll entertain a motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, I, I make a motion to.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Alamo.
Thank you. Other than the inside things that we're talking about, I voted in favor of your vote on change because I wanted to see something happen with this building, so thank you for coming forward with this application. I did see a little bit of a common area inside on some of these units you said there wasn't. And I'm happy to see the exercise room, one room on one page, you're calling it a playroom. Another page, you're calling it a storage room, so I think you got to get all that straightened out. But I'm looking more at a quality of life and the younger professional here that's going to come to this, to this facility. And I'm looking at the outside, and you talked about passive aggressive, passive regulation amendments. I don't see any of that, really. You have a lot of area, you said you had the big open part between the east and the south wing. There's, for, for example, a picnic area. Where can people go? Where's the cookouts going to be? Is there any trail? I don't see any trails, maybe a lit trail. You got the natural resource, you have the river down in the back there. If it's going to be, you know, you want to draw the right tenant, and that's using your words, you know, the young professional, young twenty-year-old, I, that, that's the part I'm looking at here. I know we have some issues we're going to straighten out, and I'm sure you guys will with the structure, but I, I would like to see some enhanced amenities and quality of life products on the outside. You know, you, you can't put decks on for people to have. I don't think you can, because, you know, your back door is going to be somebody else's front door, the way this is laid out. I don't know if you could do, do some possible fencing around each back of the unit. We need to have some kind of outdoor element here to add to this, but I like this. I want to see this building, you know, transformed into something for the community and for, you know, anybody that's willing to come to the town. I think, you know, everybody says that's our gateway at State Line. Well, that's our gateway too there, coming out of Summers into Enfield. So, you know, we want to have a nice product. And again, and I think you guys are looking to draw that young professional twenty-somethings, I think your, your colleague called them, so, you know. So they're going to want to play a little basketball maybe, or, you know, take a nice walk, or have an area to sit. So along with what my colleagues are saying, maybe we could look at a little of that stuff too.
Thank you for the feedback.
You're welcome.
Along the lines of what Commissioner Alamo said, are you going to allow gas grills at each one of the units? Like on the sidewalk area? I mean, how does that work?
Well, how is it going to work?
Right.
I think we're going to revisit, as recommended, we'll revisit what we can do for a community area. You want some enhancements on the outside, we'll try to do our best to provide them with that so we can avoid.
Well, that's what I was worried about. People just putting out grills everywhere. You have to have.
So all those things have to get revisited, and I think we can easily, depending on what we have space-wise outside, we have these parking requirements that I think are, you know, creating a situation for us, but we'll try to see where we can.
Right.
Without disturbing any wetlands and all the other.
Right. You have the perfect, perfect, we used to have the river back there. I don't know if it's accessible, or you have to look at your design, but, you know, like a night like tonight, are you going to sit in the house and have a beer, or are you going to go out? You're going to go out in the yard, right? I mean, so you got to have something.
Behind the building, before the escarpments, you have a level area semi, yeah, I mean, you could do a lot of, I mean, I'm not talking, but, you know, like a barbecue stand, couple charcoal grills that people could use, couple picnic tables, and he's right. I understand. I agree with that, and I think it would help you attract the tenants too.
Exactly. I think it'll be a draw, especially, you know, people like that kind of thing, like maybe a, you know, a nice trail back there, you know, all those kind of things, I think would be beneficial.
Careful with the trails. You got escarpments and.
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm not saying do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could do a trail around, you could do a walking path around a building.
Yeah.
People like to get out and exercise. I mean, that kind of thing. I mean, maybe you can't disturb near the river, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that, but it's there. You have so much potential.
We'll take a look.
You have so much potential there on that, on that piece of property, you really do.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Alamo. Everybody all set? I'll entertain a motion. It's not a public hearing.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking. I'll shut up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to continue. SPR eighteen thirty-eight, six twelve Hazard Avenue. The site plan review application for adaptive reuse within an SDD zone to allow for a forty-three unit apartment complex in the form of Blair Manor Facility. Meadow Manor LLC owner applicant map, one-ten lot three-four-three SDD zone. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, and that would be extending it to the June tenth meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And you guys are good with that? Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We'll see you next meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good night.
Moving on to other business. No, 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 no. SPR eighteen sixty-two, five fifty-nine Hazard Avenue. Site plan review application for facade improvements within the SCIDCO Design Overlay District. CH Realty, the eighth CGCT Atlantis LLC owner, Pablo de Miguel Iglesias applicant, map one-ten, lot thirteen, BL Zone, SCIDCO Design Overlay. Is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tina Matrall.
Hi, Tina. Welcome.
Can you just check to make sure the microphone is on? I don't know if it picked you up.
I've never done this. I'm the manager of the store, so bear with me.
Have a seat.
And what is your address, Tina?
Five fifty-nine Hazard Ave for the store.
Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Okay. They want to apply some new lap siding, lap siding cladding over the existing brick facade on the outside. The material is James Hardy, which is a fiber board commonly used everywhere. I do have some pictures that they sent me with. They just finished, do you bring them up? That's the store in Wallingford. They just finished last week. The color is a steel gray attached. Says they will do a flat finish around the shop front windows. We will use a dark gray metal panel to cover the brick. The wood color panels are metal panels imitating wood. The area where the canopy over the shop front will be further out to make a soft fit to receive the new cladding. All the signage will be filed under a separate application.
Quick question. What are you putting there? This is your free time to advertise. Tell us what you're doing here. What is this?
It's the gas station convenience store, the SCIDCO on the, that used to be the old It's the gas station convenience store, the Sitco, on the, it used to be the old food bag that's there on Hazard Ave. They have, they have hot food, we're going to be having hot food, we're waiting on health inspection. We have all kinds of stuff inside, they just wanna make the outside their brand, they wanna put, you know, LED lights on the outside, Atlantis Fresh Market. So, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna look good on the building. I think the building is old.
Yes.
It needs an upgrade. The inside looks gorgeous, they did the inside, so...
No, I'm seeing Atlantis food.
Yeah, they have different names.
And I have no idea where that, where it was.
They're out of New York, they came from New York.
Okay, no, I just didn't, I didn't know if the gas station was going away and this was going in, it's all cracked.
Oh, no, 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 they bought, the gas station and convenience store is still there, nothing's going away.
All right.
It's just, they are, they're in the petroleum business also.
All right, no, it was like, what is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you got my support, because you just won a bet with my wife, because I always called it food bag. And she's like, that's not called food bag.
You know how many people still do that?
I said, yes, it is. And then when I went there, it wasn't food bag. I'm like, what? You just proved I was right.
Yes, it's not food bag. They bought the name food bag, but they're not using the name food bag.
Okay.
And my customers are not happy. But, you know, it's been there for 50-something years or whatever, so...
Yeah, because I saw the name and I'm like, I don't know that name, so, thank you.
So, there's no expansion, you're not changing anything, not adding any new rooftop units on the building?
No, nothing.
For heat or any, you're just basically painting it, fresh facade?
Putting the panel, the stuff over the brick, I think, over the brick. I'm not even, this is the first time I've seen this, I'm out of the loop, I'm just the manager. So...
They're awful trusting, sending you on their behalf.
I'm like shaking.
Ah, don't worry about it.
It is what it is, so...
Commissioners, any questions for? Absolutely.
I think that's an important, important corner in our community as well, coming in from Summers and...
Yes.
Very nice, yeah.
Yes, a lot of customers, new customers. We also have, I know this is not this, but we have delivery service now, like Grubhub, DoorDash, we do all that stuff, too.
That's an important, that's an important corner there.
Yes, yep.
The only thing I would say is we make a condition of approval that she gets a raise.
Right. What a manager, huh?
Yeah, I've been there 18 years.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, I don't know.
All right, now that I know.
Okay, no questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR 1862, 559 Hazard Avenue, Special Permit and Site Plan Review Application for Facade Improvements Within the Skidco Design Overlay District. CH Realty, VIII CG Connecticut Atlantis LLC Owner, Pablo de Miguel Iglesias Applicant, MAP 110, Lot 13, BL Zone, according to the materials submitted under SPR 1862 and with the 13 conditions of approval listed on the memo dated, no date, well, listed on the memo. Second.
You've seen the conditions of approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll look forward to seeing all the new improvements.
I spent a little too much money there. I had to vote yes, you know what they do to your coffee if you... Have a great night. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, moving on, other business, 8-24 Referrals, 820 Enfield Street, Higgins Park. They wanna put in a basketball court, playground, and walking trails on Higgins Park.
Can probably do a sidewalk.
Nope, we're good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve 28, 820 Enfield Street, Higgins Park, 8-24 Referral for Improvement to Town Property for Proposed Basketball Court Playground and Walking Trail. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous, thank you. And 165 Weymouth Road, Edgar H. Parkman School, 8-24 Referral for Improvement to Town Property for a Proposed Splash Pad. Questions? Comment? Concerns?
I think the kids will love it.
A motion?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 1659 Weymouth Road as an 824 referral Edgar H. Parkman School.
Excuse me, 165 Weymouth Road.
165 Weymouth Road, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't say it. 824 Referral for Improvements to Town Property for Proposed Splash Pad. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Correspondents? Correspondents?
I don't have anything.
Nobody?
No.
Okay, Commissioners' correspondence?
Nope.
I'd like to welcome Nelson to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And you're in it for the long haul?
Yep.
Wave hi to your family, say...
Is it our new alternate member?
He is a new alternate member for now, yes.
Yep.
He's learning, he'll get here. Director of Development Services, none? She is not in? What happened to your...
Yes.
Did we bore her?
Yes.
No, I, she stayed, she really does aquifer more so than planning and zoning, but she did wanna stay and just see how things work as a new member of our department.
Great. Administrative Approval Report.
So, as listed here, we did receive a zoning permit for 786 Enfield Street for a Polish food market in Delhi. And then, off of that, Rick actually asked me today to add these requests, so with your permission, I will let him know if he can or admin approve these things. One is for 1551 King Street, that's New Day Church that was approved by this Commission not too long ago to update their facility. They would like to add a patio outside with just fire pits, just a little gathering place outside of the church for people to just be. And another one is 150 Hazard Avenue, that's diagonally across the street from the Enfield Professional Park, it's a business professional condo-type property, and there's a massage therapist who would like to open a business over there.
Everybody's okay with it?
Yep.
All right.
Is that under admin approval?
Yes.
All right. That's it?
For admin approvals, that's it.
787, 86th Street.
Yes, that's the Polish.
Now we're applications to be received.
Was that, did that appear before as just a meat market? Did we see that before?
There was a request recently for a Mexican meat market, so I think you're gonna have a variety over there.
This is gonna be right over here by Subway, right?
Uh, yes.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. Okay, applications to be received?
So, we have, as listed, 11 Pearl Street, a Special Permit and Site Plan Review for the Reuse of the Former Thompsonville Fire Department Building as a Mixed Use Residential and Commercial Beer and Wine Tap Room, and they just recently received a variance for a deck from Zoning Board of Appeals, so they are ready to go for the next meeting, chomping at the bit to get started, so...
What's that?
And chomping at the bit to get started.
So, residential, they're gonna have apartments upstairs?
Just one, it's the person who bought the building would like to live up over the commercial space below, so they just, they're gonna renovate it.
Really? That's what we've been asking for.
I know.
Approved.
Their entire proposal is very interesting, so...
Nice.
Will be a good one. And then we...
Tallerita's own the building?
Yes. Yep.
They're gonna live above the restaurant?
That is their proposal.
I don't believe that.
I lived in that building for a lot of years, there's nothing wrong with it. I slept in there many nights, it's fine.
Pat and Jeanette aren't gonna live upstairs there, maybe one of their kids. Good for them, but that's what we wanna do down there.
That's right.
So, that's great. So, they'll be in next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have, not listed, but we recently received 54 Hazard Avenue, there's a fencing business that would like to go in there.
54 Hazard Avenue?
Yep, I believe that's the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza.
I did see a public hearing sign on there today, I was wondering about that.
Yep, that would be why.
Stop &amp; Shop Plaza?
Yeah, there's a public hearing sign out there, on the freshwater side.
Yep.
A fencing company?
Yeah, not like fencing, like, like yard fencing, like fencing like swords. Oh, did I scare you? I'm sorry. Is he? Okay.
He has the place, Noah Broadbrook, that fencing thing.
Yeah.
He owns that, and I overheard him wanting to open up.
I'm like, I gotta tell Vinny he's gonna have to recuse himself on this one.
Great.
And then...
And that'll be next meeting?
Uh, yeah, that's ready to go, I believe, so, I, yep, and then we have 562 Enfield Street, that's Dunkin' Donuts, and they would like to do a, just a general remodel of their building, it's in the Enfield Design District, so it has to be reviewed by the Commission.
Now that we're in chambers, they should be bringing us samples. We missed the Chick-fil-A, come on.
So, that's what I have for, for applications to be received, that's all I have going on for the moment.
Opportunities and unresolved issues? Any?
No.
Motion for adjournment?
Make a motion, we adjourn? Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This was so much better.